Is that yours or mine?
Yours.
I think you just say yes. For Reese? Yes, okay.
Good morning. Welcome to our city commission meeting. We're going to begin with a prayer from Pastor Tim Cristo at the Catalyst Church. And he's also our chaplain for the police department, followed by the pledge led by General Queen. Please rise.
Thank you. I invite you to pray with me. Father God, you are the God of all wisdom. We seek your help today, as you say you have put every authority in its place, Lord. And too much responsibility is given, much is required. So come, Father, let your wisdom fall upon us, O Lord, as we gather for this meeting. Give us clarity so we can effectively tackle each part of today's agenda. Reveal problem areas and show us the best solutions that imply. Lord, encourage every heart in this room to seek the best for mankind and for this city. Let us not forget those in need, Father. Set our hearts and minds on issues like those in Buffalo. Father, we pray for comfort and peace for the survivors and the victims of Buffalo, Lord. And, Lord, we pray for those throughout the world. Lord, let us focus on this city right now. We pray that you bless this meeting, Lord. We pray that you set our minds on the things above. We seek you and your wisdom. In all his sins, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Randy, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Brannicki.
Here.
Commissioner Rader.
Where's my microphone?
Here.
Commissioner Street.
Here.
Commissioner Halagus?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
In the minutes from the May 10th meeting, I've had a chance to read those. The additions or deletions of those, so say at this time otherwise entertained a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to present the minutes as accepted to approval from May 10th, 2022.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Brannicki?
Yes. Okay, we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? I know that our city attorney has one.
Thank you. This is not, it's an addition to item 10F. In 10F, it is consideration of approval to enter into contract negotiations with six selected engineering firms, three in Millville area, two, three in St. Andrews. We have done that, and we have the contracts as far as the contract amounts on a sheet of paper. So the request is that we also approve the contracts after we approve the six engineering firms. So it's just in the motion, it will just be not only to approve entering into contracts, but to also approve the contracts.
Okay, so motion to add this item to 10F?
I'd like to move approval of that, that we add that to the agenda.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Okay, discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Brannicki?
Yes. Anything else, General?
No, sir.
Can I get Melanie Law to come up here, please? Chief? Anyone else you'd like to come up? Captain Melanie Law, badge number 602, started her career with the Panama City Police Department on May 24th, 2002. During her tenure with the department, Captain Law has worked in patrol services, traffic unit investigations, training and recruitment, and currently commands the information and logistics services section. Early in her career, Captain Law served as the lead child crimes detective and continued to be a relentless advocate for abused and neglected children throughout her career. She leads the department's crisis negotiation unit and successfully negotiated the safe surrender of several citizens suffering from mental distress who were contemplating self-harm. She has been awarded the life-saving award and numerous commendations over the past 20 years. It is with great honor and respect that we award Captain Melanie Law her 20-year service plaque from the city of Panama City.
Wow.
Leaving it on, I worked with this lady for a long time at the bank before she came to the city. We're showing our age. It is difficult to fully express the gratitude we have for the incredible dedication and loyalty that Sheila Ware has to the city of Panama City, where she has served for the past 25 years. Sheila first journeyed to the city in 1997 from People's First Bank, where she served as a CRA officer. While at People's First, she worked with a number of first-time homebuyers and counseled many existing homeowners to prevent foreclosure. Although rewarding, she saw a better need and opportunity of reaching more households by working with the city's housing program, which led to her transfer in 1997. Sheila's flexibility and professional skills were put to the test as she continued to provide support to applicants of both renters and homeowners while adding and working with the other departments in the city, addressing other levels of effort such as quality of life, economic development, safety and security, and infrastructure projects with the use of community development block grant funding. That passion for learning and supporting the city's mission is as strong today as it was 25 years ago. In the last number of years, Sheila focused her attentions on achieving an increase on housing affordability and stability, elevating awareness and attentiveness to the impact of housing stability on a broad range of outcomes, including education, health, and employment, strengthening partnerships to improve program participants' housing stability, identifying and removing barriers to housing assistance and/or prioritizing households experiencing or at risk of homelessness, aligning all housing affordability and homelessness efforts. Sheila completed one of her more interesting and challenging contributions, coordinating and preparing first-time homebuyer counseling classes, which she holds on a quarterly basis. Here is where she helps potential first-time homebuyers determining whether they are prepared and/or equipped to own their first home and if they are willing to accept this huge responsibility. The scope and scale of these classes garnished Sheila the respect and accolades of those that worked with her, as well as those participating. Her approach to the task and what she was able to accomplish solidified her reputation and stature with her coworkers and participants. Sheila is most valued, long-term employee whose high standards, technological experience, excellence, and collegial empathy and mentoring has led and sustained the community development housing program for years. Sometimes, one can only begin to understand the importance of individuals by imagining how a department would function without them. We have thought about this with Sheila, and I can say with full honesty that it would not exist at all, much less at its current highly productive level. Thank you, Sheila, for 25 years of dedicated service to the city of Panama City. Where's Tessie? Come on up. Come on. Bring your better half. Welcome. We go to church together, so. Forty years. All her life. Tessie Goicachia began serving the citizens of Panama City on May 14th, 2002 as a bookkeeper in the accounting department. She was promoted to payroll accounting clerk on January 26th, 2006, where she learned all of the details of processing the city's payroll. On December 20th, 2016, Tessie was promoted to payroll coordinator, the position she faithfully serves in today. Tessie is an invaluable member of the city's accounting team. Her knowledge of the payroll and accounting processes and her years of experience are relied upon daily. She is dedicated to her job, employs the city of Panama City, and to the city Tessie is always willing to go the extra mile and do what is needed to accomplish the task at hand. Thank you, Tess, for these 20 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Panama City. Employees like you are treasured and valued. We honor you today with this 20-year plaque. Got a couple of proclamations to read. Men's health? Okay, we have some people regarding safe boating? Oh, yeah, absolutely. Remember that commercial, "Safe boating is no accident"? I used to say that all the time, my wife would say. Over 100 million Americans continue to enjoy boating as a popular recreational activity. Panama City is blessed with many waterways to enjoy. Safe boating begins with preparation. The Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for most boating accidents and that life jackets could prevent nearly 86% of boating fatalities. Through basic boating safety procedures such as carrying life-saving emergency distress and communications equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks, and staying sober when navigating, we can help ensure boaters on America's coastal inland and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. The U.S. Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important safe, life-saving tips for recreational boaters so they can have a safer, more fun experience out of the water throughout the, out on the water throughout the year. Now, therefore, I, Greg Brannicki, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Panama City, do hereby proclaim May 21st through the 27th, 2022, as National Safe Boating Week throughout the city of Panama City. And I ask our citizens of Panama City to support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign with a year-round effort to promote safety on the waterways. I encourage all boaters, protect themselves, and to set a good example for our youth by keeping safety first. Despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. Educating the public and healthcare workers about the importance of healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. Men who are educated about the value of their preventative healthcare can play, that healthcare can play in prolonging their lifespan and their role as productive family members will be more likely to participate in health screenings. Fathers who stay connected to their children and maintain a healthy lifestyle are role models for their children and have happier, healthy children. Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop a national men's health awareness period as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive health attitudes and preventative health practices. The Men's Health Month website has been established at www.menshealthmonth.org and features resources, proclamations, and information about awareness events and activities, including Wear Blue Day. Men's Health Month will focus on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, diabetes, and prostate, testicular, and colon cancer. The citizens of Panama City are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups. Now, therefore, I, Greg Brannicki, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Panama City, do hereby proclaim June 20, 2022, as Men's Health Month, and encourage all our citizens to pursue preventative health practices and early detection efforts throughout the year.
Very important.
Yes. Especially for us old geezers. Okay, next on the agenda, we have appointments to the Panama City Port Authority. And we had several well-qualified individuals that applied for this, these two positions. And I really want to thank Mr. Crisp, Mr. Hollingsworth, Mr. Stamps, Mr. Smith, Dr. Reese, and Michael Winn for releasing very extensive resumes. And the city appreciates you offering your expertise. We only have two positions to fill. So one of them, the first one that I would like to bring up, it happens to be the chairman of the Port Authority. And so I want to know if we have a nomination for one particular, for the first particular position?
I would, I would like to, first of all, say one thing. The, the Port Authority is, is an incredible part of our local economy. People, I don't think people really realize how much, how much cargo comes through there. And I learned that over the years and especially lately. And it is so vital. I think we're the number one in the United States for copper. Fifty, isn't something like that, 58% of copper is the biggest thing in there.
Pretty amazing.
It's, it's amazing. And then how it's expanded to the, to the east and, and all the dredging projects. And now with the Federal Express, all of that property and 74 more acres are waiting to be developed out off of 231. And we, the city has partnered with the port. So I just wanted to, I'm thankful for the port. And Alex, man, you're doing a great job, that's leading them. I commend you, brother, and everybody's on that board. So my motion was going to be, right now, to make, to make a motion that Harvey Hollingsworth remain on the board. And I know we have to have unanimous consent, you know, to do that. So, but that's my motion for this first part of the.
Here, a second?
A second a motion, Mayor.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Brannicki?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Okay, the second position that we have opened, I hear a motion?
I'd just like to say we've had some fantastic applicants. I'd like to make a motion on Dr. Reese.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion and second? Any discussion?
Well, my only discussion is, I just want to thank Don Crisp. What a wonderful man he's done. I know you may want to say something in a minute about that, too. But we have to have unanimous consent, so. I understand where we are.
Call the roll?
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Brannicki?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
And, and I do want to mention that the port has really expanded and come a long way in the last several years. And as Mr. Rader mentioned earlier, about copper, about the amount of product that we have that comes back and forth from our sister city, Merida.
Yeah.
And Mr. Crisp, I think, served on that, we're probably close to 20 years, and did a phenomenal job.
Fantastic.
And so we appreciate the fact that he would donate his time for that long. And I'm certainly glad that we had so many people apply for that position, and they were all, as I said earlier, well-qualified. And we do have other things to do in the city, so you can get with Brandy or Jan and if you'd like to apply for something else, because the level of expertise that was there, we could certainly use in other areas of the city. But again.
Well said.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Crisp. Wherever you are, we appreciate it, all of us do. Thank you.
He's been a great leader, and he still is.
Yes.
Still is.
Okay, we've got a couple of term expirations on the Infrastructure Certex Citizens Committee. If you'd like to apply to that, get with City Hall. And we have a couple of term expirations on the Panama City Planning Board. So if you're interested in being involved with the planning board, then please contact City Hall. And same goes for, I think we have one position that's coming open on the Panama City Housing Authority. So you can contact City Hall if you are interested in that. And. Panama City Center for the Arts played host to the Second Annual Star Wars Day on May 4th. Hundreds of Jedi, both young and old, attended this year's event. Then included games, a scavenger hunt, and a Jedi training course. City of Panama City hosted its inaugural Cinco de Mayo Festival out at Oakland Terrace Park, May 5th. This event included authentic Latin music, chips and salsa, and our first-ever hot pepper eating contest. The city of Panama City concluded its final youth tennis session of the spring season, May 19th, at Oakland Terrace Park. This free camp ran Wednesday and Thursdays from April 6th to May 19th. It was open to all ages, 5 through 14. We've just got a few slots left for the Second Annual Kids BBQ Cook-Off, May 28th, out at Red and White and Q BBQ Festival. Red, White, and Q.
Red, White, and Q.
Clever, I got it. This year, children in two different age categories will compete for most creative hot dog and best hamburger and side. To sign up, contact Panama City Quality of Life at AOL@panamacity.gov. Or QOL, I'm sorry. Calling all teens, our next Teen Tuesday. Paint Night takes place May 31st out at Frank Nelson Clubhouse. Join us on the last Tuesday of each month to create step-by-step canvases, co-hosted by Palmeel Paint, PC. Admissions free. The fund begins at 6:00 PM. Parents, you are encouraged to participate with your child. We're taking it back to nature this summer with sunrise and sunset yoga, beginning June 29th. This year, the city of Panama City is teaming up with Florida Blue to connect mind, body, and soul in a relaxing green space. For more information about this nine-week program, go to panamacity.gov. During this year's Juneteenth celebration, Minority PC, the city of Springfield, and the city of Panama City invite you to join us for movies in the neighborhood. This year's family-friendly film festival takes place at three different locations, June 3rd, 10th, and 24th. For more information about this and other Juneteenth celebration events, visit our website at panamacity.gov. Start making your plans now to join us in historic downtown Panama City for our annual fireworks and family activities. Check our website at panamacity.gov for more event information. Okay, at this time, we'll have audience participation. Does anyone sign up for audience participation? We've got Mr. Thomas.
Good morning. Derek Thomas, 1100 West 10th Street. Last time I came in here, I had mentioned, as an example, the property across the street from my house, and the height of the plants growing there. I was told by somebody at code enforcement that they had sent a letter to the person that owned that property. I had written a letter, I mean, I'd written a three-page-long complaint to code enforcement that started with the sentence, "I don't really care about the height of the plants across the street from my house." I look at them every single day. That doesn't matter to me. What matters is the height of the water. The, if you look at the geographical map, there used to be a valley that ran down the middle of the block across the street, and it would end at the drain that's four feet below the height of the road. Now, if you look at the topographical map, you can click anywhere along the middle of the block, and it's thirty-seven feet, until you get to fifty-six feet away from the drain, at which point it jumps to forty feet. And so there's no drainage. And that's the problem to me. I don't really care about the height of the plants. Whoever heard what I said and contacted code enforcement and made code enforcement go there and, and talk to the owner, that wasn't on me. I said specifically to code enforcement, "I don't really care about the height of the plants." If you look at the damage after Hurricane Michael, Mexico Beach, they had real damage because of the water. Water is very, very destructive. It's way more destructive than wind. And if there's water that's moving through the neighborhoods, and it gets obstructed by something, and if somebody builds something that obstructs the water, that has an effect on the other people in that community. And that's, I think, more important than what it, something looks like. Causes actual damage. People have to spend money. If you look at the area right in between Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street, near where the old grocery outlet used to be, there's a Marine Institute there, and there's four new houses that are about four feet higher than everything else, and there's no drains around that area. So the Marine Institute now is going to have serious problems because of what somebody else decided to do on their property. The Marine Institute had nothing to do with that. They have no control over it. In my neighborhood, next to Lake Caroline, if ten feet in from the road, there's two trees that are laying in what used to be a ditch. If you just clear out that area and pull those trees to the re, to the street and get rid of them, that would create a ditch equal to the ditch that was there before the hurricane. That's all I'm asking you to do. If, if it doesn't do any good, you should talk to code enforcement about that, and if there's nobody else that can do anything about it, I know you spent $20 million, I think that's a quick fix that would help alleviate problems in the neighborhood, and I would respectfully ask you to do something about that. Thank you.
Ms. Clay.
Good morning, everyone. Michelle Clay, 803 East 10th Street. I just want to give a shout-out. I know I gave the shout-out on the Monday morning manager meeting, but a huge shout-out to Quality of Life. They went above and beyond on this past Saturday at our first inaugural Discover Asia event. They were there the whole time providing support. It was a phenomenal event. Met so many new people who have been in Panama City for a while, so to see them come out was just, was awesome. Also, a shout-out to Assistant Manager Jared Jones for providing the update on the Glenwood Community Center. And, and that's what we want, to just see the growth and the movement in the whole Bay County. So thank you, guys, and look forward to more awesome events.
Good.
I've got to tell you, that Asia event was really interesting. It was really good.
Come forward. Right?
Nah, he's just.
Did you sign up or no?
Oh, Lord. It's me, I guess.
Yeah, you're last.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. From, being here from DC and seeing the event, thank you. And I'm always coming here and being grateful for the things that you're doing in supporting DASTRA and supporting the community. I'm truly looking forward to seeing some, some growth, and more growth, especially in the Glenwood, Martin Luther King area. And thank you, thank you, and I look forward to continuing to come here and support this city, DASTRA, and Ms. Clay as we move forward.
Now, can you give me your address, put it on, I gotta have it for the record?
1804 E 7th Court. I'm gonna use my mom's.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
Devin? Thank you.
One more person, I think, wants to speak. I know, you didn't sign up. Is, is there a thing at the door when you walk in to sign up?
Good morning. Good morning. I didn't have time to sign up, but nevertheless. And to you all, thanks for a job well done. And I live on, my name is Henrietta Barnes, and I live on 617 Maple Avenue. And we've been having some problem with speeders coming through there, and we have children at play, grandchildren at play, and we just maybe want a speed sign. We have a speed sign saying twenty-five miles per hour, but look like they're just disregarding that, and maybe something to show that children are at play will help us, because I would hate to see a tragedy in my community with the kids running after balls and having fun on the outside. And, and I just wish that something could be done in the future, that we'll be able to protect our children from danger.
And you're 617 Maple?
Maple Avenue.
Maple, okay. Six.
Seventh and Maple.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, yes, ma'am.
Devin?
Thank you.
Could I be allowed to speak even though I didn't sign up?
Sure.
Mayor, while he's coming forward, I want to make one quick announcement, and I meant to do this earlier. I made a promise to someone. If anybody out there has children or grandchildren between the ages of ten and eighteen, there's a free football camp coming up June 1, at Tom, June 24th, 25th, at Tommy Oliver Stadium. If anybody's interested, it's free. There'll be some NFL people there. If anybody, just let me know if you have any kids or neighborhood kids. It's a great thing. It's part of our city.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Bob Stapleton, 542 South Bonita. I'm here to just keep it in the forefront that I think that our, one of our greatest assets of this area, and most would agree, is the water that we have here and access to it. And I really appreciate that the city has seen fit to build a, go forward with building the Snow Harbor Marina Launch. I mean, that'll be fantastic. Fifty-something parking places. But I would also encourage you to consider to keeping the boat launch at the city marina. While the infrastructure improvement has been going on down there, you could have, at the same time, improved that boat launch. I've talked to marine engineers about it, and the possibility of improving that is, doesn't require, by their assessment, redoing the whole boat launch. I mean, it's just washed out under the, it's usable the way it is, but it's washed out under the, it needs to be extended slightly, and it could be filled, and, I mean, they have the capability to do that. Be a lot less than building a new boat launch. There are about fifty plus or minus a few parking spots down there for boats and trailers. And then there's also additional parking, because anybody that launches a boat might have other occupants on the boat. There's parking for that, too, for single vehicles. So it's a fantastic facility that we have, and it can be approved. As far as the cost of it, the Mexico Beach has a nice boat launch, and they're doing huge improvements over there. That's their only access, so it's, it's incumbent upon them to do that. They've always charged a fee there, and you can buy for $50 an annual pass or $10 per launch. I think we could justify doing that here, if it would help, and I think, obviously, money helps. But to charge a fee, if it were, say, $10, I don't think anybody would object to that very much. Of course, they're going to object to it, but they, if they considered it, they, they wouldn't, as opposed to closing boat launch. It's four miles further from the Snow Harbor to the pass, if, and many boats would be going out of the pass, and eight miles added to the trip, two miles to the gallon, that's about $25 a trip spent to leave from Snow Harbor versus leaving from the downtown marina. So I think it could justify having a fee and an annual fee or a boat launch fee. Just something to consider. I want to keep this in the forefront, and hopefully keep our boat launch. Thank you.
Devin?
Thank you. The first item is a first reading. No, yes, first reading. Item 7A, it's ordinance 3050A, amending Chapter 7 related to sexually-oriented businesses. The purpose of this ordinance is not to change the intent of the existing ordinance, but it further defines what change of ownership is. The background is that sexually-oriented businesses cannot be located within, I think, a couple hundred feet of a tourism corridor if there is a, but if they're already there, they, at the time that that ordinance was adopted in the late 1990s, they're considered legally non-conforming. But if there's a change of ownership, they lose the legal non-conforming status and then must comply with the code. And the code requires them to relocate off of the tourism corridor. An issue has come up concerning just what that means, change of ownership. It's always been interpreted and applied that if ownership changes, what, even if the name of the business doesn't change, that's a change of ownership. And so this would just simply clarify that more definitively, and the request is to have the first reading. And the first reading is ordinance number 3058, and ordinance amending Chapter 7, Business Licenses and Business Regulations. Article 3, Sexually Oriented Business, providing a clarification to change of ownership, providing a reasonable but certain winding-down period with which extinguishes current non-conforming uses, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing an immediately effective date. Second item I have, item 7B, is execution of the Walgreens subdivision settlement participation form and settlement agreement and release in the National Prescriptive Opiate Litigation. These have been approved by you previously. This is the latest settlement that the Attorney General's Office had with Walgreens, and the request is for you to execute it. Any proceeds that are received directly by the city would be restricted to be used for abatement programs related to the opioid crisis. But the request is to approve this settlement.
Your motion?
Yes, I'd like to move approval of the settlement.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brannicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Next item is to request your approval of the settlement memorandum that was aired into between Piment, as Florida Municipal Insurance Trust representatives, and city representatives. The city manager was present, well, Baker, Mark Barber, who's special counsel for the city and me. So that's who signed the settlement memorandum. The settlement memorandum is not binding until it's approved by this commission, and we are requesting your approval. The, this would, once this is approved, then this means that the city will have received $73 million off of its, from its insurance policy for damages related to Hurricane Michael. This approves the final settlement of $30 million to be paid within thirty days. These, this payment is for work that hasn't been accomplished yet, that's related to Hurricane Michael. I'd like to say that there was a lot of effort that went into the settlement. It was a two-day mediation. Bill Perry's in our audience, and he was there, he and Gerald Robinson, to provide expert help throughout the mediation. Joy Masters, my partner, is here, and she has been taking the lead with our firm related to the settlement claims, over 250 over the last year and a half. Also, Wendy Ellard and Mark Barber with Baker Donaldson provided excellent assistance as far as special counsel for the city. And of course, Mark McQueen was sitting there throughout the entire time. But I think it's, I recommend that the commission approve it.
I'll move a motion to approve the settlement.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Just thank you.
Thank you so much, and, and I do, I guess I have to throw in one jab. The amount of effort that it took to get paid is phenomenal, and I bet they didn't have to beat down our door to get the premium every year. So thank you for what you did, and I wish we could have been working on something else instead of having to fight with them. Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brannicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. I would like to clarify something. We used, it's the 43 million, it says that they, they've already given us. I want to make sure people know that wasn't in cash. That was them getting things, you know, roosted on our buildings or things like that. So these are the insurance paid directly to a contractor on our behalf to do that. So I didn't want people thinking.
We got 73 in value.
Right.
They got, they still owe us 30 in cash.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
The 43 million's a combination, a little cash, a lot of work.
A lot of doing.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I draw your attention to item 8A, which is the final reading of ordinance 3061.1, which is voluntary annexation of .507 acres of property located at 2503 West 33rd Street. As background information, the applicant has requested annexation to the city to utilize city services. The item was reviewed by the Planning Board on April 11th, 2022, and the Planning Board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's my recommendation we move forward with final reading of, for annexation.
This is a public hearing. Anyone like to address us on this issue? Seeing no one, do you hear a motion on 3061.1?
Move approval, Mayor.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brannicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted ordinance number 3061.1, and ordinance of the city approving the voluntary annexation of .507 acres of unincorporated property located at 2503 West 33rd Street, Bay County, Florida, into the city, as further defined herein after amending the wards and boundaries of the city to include said lands and providing for an effective date.
Item 8B is final reading of ordinance 3061.2, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of residential for the property located at 2503 West 33rd Street. As background information, it's the same as I shared earlier in the annexation agenda request, and as such, it's a recommendation to conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Continuing the public hearing. Your motion on 3061.2?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
I'll second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brannicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted ordinance 3061.2, and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of residential for a parcel of property located at 2503 West 33rd Street, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Item 8C is the final reading of ordinance 3061.3, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of residential one, R1, for the property located at 2503 West 33rd Street. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the annexation agenda request, and the recommendation is to conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Still in the public hearing? Anyone like to address us? Your motion on 3061.3?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brannicki.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted ordinance 3061.3, and ordinance zoning a parcel of property located at 2503 West 33rd Street, Panama City, Florida, having approximately .507 acres, R1, providing for severability and effective date.
Item 8D is the final reading of ordinance 3062.1, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of general commercial for the property located at 2923 and 2925 Stanford Road. As background information, this item was reviewed by the Planning Board on April 11th, 2022, and the Planning Board recommended denial with a vote of four to one. With that, it's a recommendation to conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
This is a public hearing. Anyone like to address us on this issue?
My name's Scott Bowman, 2705 Woodmere Drive, Panama City. This is a little history about how we got here. I bought a building, two buildings, in fact, years ago. I bought a building, two buildings in fact, years ago. Immediately renovated one of them and opened two separate businesses that I own into them. One of the businesses we shuttered, and I just expanded my other business into that building. During the course of doing that, after the storm, there was some change in ordinances that doesn't allow me to use my building if I lease it, even if I lease it to myself, is what I found out. So the first time we tried to lease it to another person, they came down and their license request was rejected. It was, that's, it's important that we know the difference between rejected and denied. It was rejected, and that started the process of us applying for mixed use three. Came through the process and was denied, so we were told to resubmit for general commercial. We did that, came back, it was also denied. So during the process of that second thing, the city attorney Zimmerman explained in great length that we could do what we wanted to as a legal nonconforming use. So we just applied to do that. Again, we were rejected, not denied, rejected, rejected at the licensing desk. There's a process by which the application is approved and/or denied, and then I've learned recently from Mr. Zimmerman at the last planning board meeting that there's an appeal process to a denial, not to a rejection. So there's a process by which I could have been denied and then appealed and explained my thing, but that was never allowed to happen. It's currently in the works right now, but it's been over a month. I still don't have, I don't have a rejection, but I don't have a denial either. So there's a miscommunication, a wrench in the works at the licensing department, and no one's processing the applications to be formally denied so that I can formally appeal. So that's where we're at right now, is I'm still asking for general commercial one so that I don't have to come visit you guys a bunch of times just to get some staff person to do their job. So I would like to, you know, the building was built as a commercial structure, I'd like to continue to use it that way, but the least thing that you guys changed in February of nineteen is really complicated the use of my building legally nonconforming.
Anyone else?
Bill Self, twenty-nine fifteen Marion Drive. Nothing has changed since this first started. They made a few minor improvements on landscaping, but the citizens around there still don't not want a commercial building in, commercial business in that area. Would still like to go back to residential. To me, this just seems like a way to keep presenting till they wear you down and get you to go the way they want to go. I would like to request y'all to approve the planning board's denial of this application. Thank you very much.
Gene Simons, twenty-nine twenty Marion Drive. Feel like I'm getting to know y'all very well. We've been here many times, and I don't think anybody's changed their mind about this. They did clean it up a little bit, it looks some better, but there again, the traffic is crazy. Twenty-third Street, traffic to three ninety. It's getting worse and worse, and the cars are going faster and faster. We've still got kids waiting on school buses, so I don't know, I don't know, I feel sorry for him. He's got a, he's got an investment that is limited in use, but at the same time, it's our neighborhood, and we'd like to keep it a neighborhood. Do recognize that there are other businesses on either end of Stanford Road, but not where we are, and that is the major intersection for that entire part of our neighborhood. So I ask you to honor what the planning board said and to deny the request, and I appreciate all your service very much. Thank you.
Delbert Summy, twenty-eight twenty-seven Jamden Drive. I would first like to thank the city attorney in coming to the planning board meeting because I think that was very, very helpful. One of the things that I took out of that planning board meeting was the fact that this, as currently zoned, it's a variance, and one of the things that the city attorney pointed out, that that variance, okay, if changed, was intended to go back to the original use of the land as residential, the way it was originally zoned. That's what we would like to see if the variance is changed, okay? We would like to see it go back to residential, okay, to conform with the way the rest of the local area is used. Is the safety issue for schoolchildren that are catching buses, okay, with increased traffic, okay? The use of the property behind and on either side is residential. It's, it's only reasonable that that variance use go back to residential, and we would like to request that you do that as you have supported in the past. Please do that. Thank you very much.
Linda Self, twenty-nine fifteen Marion Drive. No need to repeat what's been said over and over as we've come before you. I do want to point out that legally, I think if we look at the criteria set forth in the rules for a commercial building, namely stormwater, impervious surface area setbacks, the building is noncompliant. I believe that we would be going against our own rule if we decided to grant a commercial zoning in this instance. I appreciate the board's consideration. I too ask for denial. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no.
This would be the last one.
Jennifer Bowman, twenty-seven oh five Woodmere Drive. At the first, at the last county, city commission meeting, we were told that if we, by Mr. Zimmerman, that if we were to, that we could not rent it out to somebody else, but if we rented it, if we did it ourselves, we opened a business ourselves, that would, we were able to do that. I did try to do that. I've tried to open something myself, and I can't get through the process, so that's why we've come back to the planning board, because after talking to several of you, I was told, let's try again, see what we can do. You know, I've been told I'd be helped, but it's been a month, I have not heard anything. Some of the repairs we've done, we have redone the parking lot, we've done, redone the stripes. The residents had asked for the side road, Twenty-seventh Street, to be blocked off. We have a heavy-duty gate there where nobody can get through there, so the traffic is flowing onto Stanford Road, not onto Twenty-seventh, which I like because people don't cut through our parking lot anymore, which was something that I didn't like anyway. I also want to point out that you can throw a football to the next commercial business closest to this, which is just down a couple of, couple of properties down from us on Stanford, and we're a thousand sixty-five feet away from the opening of the new Suite Bay. So the traffic on Stanford Road, they think it's bad because I want to open a boutique, clothing boutique, wait till that opens, because that's going to become a highway. There's a lot of people that come up and down Stanford Road to get to the new apartments that are now open up there, to cut through to get to three ninety, which is fabulous, by the way, that superhighway is fantastic. You know, I just don't know that the, they talk about safety, but have there been reports? We've never seen an accident in front of our building, knock on wood, hope to God that never happens, but we have taken huge steps in making this so they're not going, flowing back into the neighborhood. They are state, people are coming in and out, staying on Stanford. That's all I have. I appreciate your consideration and the change. Thanks.
So forget the change for a minute. Can you help us understand why we can't help them get their business license?
Oh, I can. Would you like, I mean, that's not, I mean, it's relevant.
I know that's not what we're voting on, but that's part of what the problem is, is that the community wants to keep it residential, which is understandable, and then, but they bought a business, and we're saying, well, you can't, you know, now we're, you know, whatever. All that, fine, but the reason that they're clearly saying they're back here again is because of the business license issue, because we're not allowing them to open up the business.
That's not what the Bowman's said at the planning commission meeting, because I specifically asked the Bowman's.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
I asked the Bowman's, if you were to get your second business license, they already have one, and I said, if you were to get your second business license, does that mean you would not pursue commercial zoning? And the answer was, no, we still would like commercial zoning because we would like to sell our property to, for a commercial purpose and not lose the nonconforming status. I understand that. I believe that they will be denied ultimately, and we, we're in this hiatus between planning officials, because what they have asked for is to expand the nonconforming use. Once, they've always had a business there. No one is trying to shut down their use of this property for a legally nonconforming business. That is not the issue. They have asked that, there's only one business. They have asked now to have two businesses, and under our code, that is an increase of an existing nonconforming use, which is not allowed. So when you, if you ever decrease it, you cannot grow it back, and so that will probably mean it will be denied. It's a little bit different than what was, what they had applied for a few months ago. They would have a remedy of appealing to the planning commission, and then if, and then, but, but that is not, it is relevant, but it's not relevant as far as the decision today. The decision today is whether or not this piece of property should be zoned commercial so that it can be sold in the future, and the Bowman's can use it now for a commercial purpose without worrying about whether or not, without relying on their nonconforming grandfathered status, their legally nonconforming status. Nothing today is going to shut down the existing commercial use of this piece of property. It has been a legal nonconforming use for many, many years, and it will continue to be unless that use is decreased, and then it can't expand again, or the property is sold, and in twenty nineteen, the commission said, well, you know, the reason we have legal nonconforming provisions in our code is to allow individuals to have their investment protected, but because we have decided that this code, they're in a, in a zoning category that's not normal, then once that property is sold though, or that property is destroyed, or that property is expanded, well, not, then they will lose their legal nonconforming status, and then it has to be used consistent with the zoning that is here. This property is zoned residential, it can be used as a legal nonconforming commercial use and is continued to be. The use cannot be expanded. If the use decreases, there was once two businesses, now there's one, and I believe the decision will be you cannot go back to two. If the property is rented to a third party, then that is a transfer of interest in the real estate, which would amount to losing their nonconforming status. That's why a rent, a lease to a third party creates a transfer of interest, which would mean that the property loses its nonconforming status. So when this was all talked about, and the issue was, well, if the Bowman's received a second permit, which I don't believe, I mean, they can appeal that decision, does that mean that they would not pursue a commercial zoning? And the answer was, no, we would like this commission to consider approving a commercial zoning so we're not living under the restrictions of a nonconforming use. That is their right to pursue it. We don't have anything in our code right now that limits how many times somebody can ask for the same thing. Now, this is the second time for this particular zoning, and then it was mixed use another time. So they, they, we're, my opinion, we're not here because of the request for another business. I think we're here because of the original reasons, the desire, legitimate desire to have.
That's a good explanation, because I wasn't understanding why they were having so much difficulty with the business license. That, thank you.
So, so the, so the request before you is the planning commission, the proposed land use amendment, and I'm reading from the summary of the staff, will not be consistent, the summary of findings, the proposed land use amendment zoning change will not be consistent with the future land use and rezoning, rezoning designation patterns in the area. The city, Panama City Commission's voted to deny the request back in November, the planning commission voted to deny it, and so this, this decision before you is whether or not it's your decision to make is consistent with the, it qualifies for a change to G C one.
Do I hear a motion to accept the planning board's recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion. Yes, I would. I understand with all my heart where the Bowman's are coming from, I honestly do, but this is, this is, our hands are tied legally, our hands are tied.
Okay, so I've got a motion.
That's my motion, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Raeder.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
No.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brennicki.
Yes.
Motion to deny passes four one.
Okay, the motion fails. The next item, Mr. Mayor is zoning, and that is, that is moot at this time because the.
Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor.
Do you do something wrong?
I'm sorry.
No.
You still need to.
I don't think.
Okay, we don't have to do the, we don't have to do the zoning, so.
Right. Eight E, we do not consider.
So moving on to item eight G, which is the final reading of ordinance three zero six three point two, oh, I'm sorry, apologize. Here you go. Is the final reading of ordinance three zero six three point one amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of urban residential for the property located at forty-eight ten West Highway ninety-eight. As background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on August eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously with the caveat that the applicant provide proof of mailing to the development services staff prior to the first city commission meeting. The city attorney's office has reviewed and is satisfied that proof of mailing information provided, it was provided by the applicant. With that, it's the recommendation to conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
It's a public hearing. Anyone like to address us on this issue? Your motion on thirty-six to three point one?
So just as some background, I've had some conversations with neighbors over there, and there's some concern about what potential may happen with this specific property, so I'm going to motion to deny.
I'll second, Josh.
Got a motion to deny and a second. Got a motion to deny, and a second. Call roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Brennicky?
Yes.
Motion to deny passes five zero.
Once, eight, six is moot because of the denial of.
You mean G?
That's what I meant. I read a G, it's a six, yeah. Thank you.
All right. So with that, I move to item eight H, which is the final reading of ordinance three zero six five point one amending the future land use map of the city to reflect the land use designation at urban residential for the property located at three-three-one State Avenue, three-two-one West Twenty-third Place, and three-two-nine West Twenty-third Place. Background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Public hearing. Anyone like to address us on this issue? Your motion on thirty-sixty-five point one.
Going once, going twice?
Yeah.
No, I just thought Billy probably would. Whose district is this in?
I think it's, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out why there's three addresses.
It's.
It's really just like a little neighborhood.
It's three separate parcels. Three parcels that were originally done, and then one building was placed in all three parcels.
I mean, I'll move the motion.
Oh, this, it's very strange.
It is, it is very strange.
Your second?
I got a second motion.
It's already been made, okay.
Discussion, call roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Brennicky?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
The commission has adopted ordinance number thirty-sixty-five point one, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect the land use designation of urban residential for parcels of property located at three-three-one State Avenue, three-two-one West Twenty-third Place, three-two-nine West Twenty-third Place. Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer severability and effective date.
Item eight I is the final reading of ordinance three zero six five point two, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect the zoning designation of urban residential two, U R two, for the property located at three-three-one State Avenue, three-two-one West Twenty-third Place, and three-two-nine West Twenty-third Place. Background information, it's the same as I shared in the annexation, correction of the land use request, and as such, it's the recommendation to conduct the final reading of the ordinance.
Continuing the public hearing. Your motion on thirty-sixty-five point two.
Yes, Mayor, I'll make the motion, and just for the, so everybody can understand, at twenty-third and State Avenue, there's a little shopping center there with a subway in there, and.
Recruits.
Yeah, there's, the army recruiters, yeah. Anyway, it's that nine thousand square foot house that overlooks everything. That's what that is. That's where that's at.
Says Forsyth.
Is that Forsyth, right.
Twenty-third.
So that's the land we're talking about. So I move approval of that.
I'll second the motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Brennicky?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
The commission has adopted ordinance thirty-sixty-five point two, an ordinance zoning parcels of property located at three-three-one State Avenue, three-two-one West Twenty-third Place, three-twenty-nine West Twenty-third Place. Panama City, Florida, having approximately one point two three nine acres, urban residential two, providing for severability and effective date.
Okay, we've got two items on the consent agenda. We want to discuss those separately, otherwise entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, nine A and B.
Motion to approve. Second the motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Brennicky?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
General?
So item ten A is the consideration to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget to include funding provided by the American Rescue Plan, ARPA, to create the ARPA fund and to transfer previously budgeted amounts to the ARPA fund. As background information, the federal government provided the city approximately ten million dollars in funding as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. The first payment was five million, forty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents, and was included in the disaster relief fund budget. In preparation for receipt of the final payment, the ARPA funds are being transferred into a separate fund in order to provide transparency as to the city's use of those funds. As such, the staff recommends approval to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget for the ARPA fund receipts and to create the ARPA fund, as well as to transfer the previously budgeted amounts to the ARPA fund.
Motion on ten A?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Discussion, call roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Brennicky?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
The commission has adopted resolution number twenty twenty-two oh five two four point one, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget for the accounting of American Rescue Plan funds.
Excuse me. Item ten B is a consideration of resolution two zero two two zero five two four point two, and consideration of the city applying for the historic preservation special category grant for the St. Andrews School with a match requirement in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. As background information, the city of Panama City will submit an application for the St. Andrews School and resolution two zero two two zero five two four point two to the Florida Department of State Division of Historic Resources for a restoration grant that requires a matching funds. The city will submit an application by June first, twenty twenty-two, for the historic preservation special category funds with a total grant request of one million dollars to repair the roof, the fire suppression systems, the plumbing, the electrical, the doors, and finishes at St. Andrews School. This requires a fifty percent match of five hundred thousand dollars. If the city has awarded the grant, the staff will bring the grant agreement forward and accompanying budget resolution before the city commission for your consideration and ultimate approval. With that, the recommendation is to approve the resolution two zero two two zero five two four point two for the five hundred thousand dollar matching grant for the historic preservation.
Motion on ten B?
I'd like to make that motion, motion.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion.
I'd just like to add, there's been a lot of work that's been put into this. I just want to recognize Ms. Nancy Hudson for the work that she's done in collecting letters from our fellow dignitaries and such to put stuff together. So I appreciate you, Nancy, and all the staff for being in support of it. And so I certainly hope that we do get it, because it'll be, go a long way in actually getting the school open.
Sure. Yeah, they're hard workers. I love it. Very grateful.
Call roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Brennicky?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted twenty, resolution twenty twenty-two oh five two four point two, a resolution of the city of Panama City, Florida allocating matching funds for historic preservation special category grant for the restoration of St. Andrews School.
Item ten C is consideration to approve budget amendment resolution two zero two two zero five two four point three to utilize state forfeiture funds to purchase equipment for the Panama City Police Department's training room in the amount of five thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. As background information, the Panama City Police Department is seeking to transfer the needed amount from the state forfeiture funds to build a hyperwall, a wall of digital screens that can be unified and used as, or used as separate displays to enhance the delivery of training materials. This technology is anticipated to also be used by our crime analyst, and in the event of emergency, will assist in the operations of the Panama City Police Department as the backup location for the Bay County Emergency Management. This expenditure is inclusive of all construction materials, I T. equipment, which will be required for the project. As such, it's the recommendation that we can accept the budget resolution two zero two two zero five two four point three in the amount of five thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-six cents.
Motion on ten C?
Move staff recommendation, yes.
Second the motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Brennicky?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has adopted resolution twenty twenty-two oh five two four point three, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget to use state forfeiture funds to purchase equipment to build a wall of digital screens that can be unified or used as separate displays to enhance the delivery of training materials.
Item ten D is a consideration of approval of budget amendment resolution two zero two two zero five two four point four for task order P C twenty-two dash zero one three for pump station forty-four S R F improvements in the amount of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety cents to Mott McDonald. As background information, amendment one to the P C twenty-two dash zero one three adds area O eleven to the existing approved S R F task order proposing replacement of and improvements to three thousand seven hundred and thirty-six linear feet of existing sewer, water, and roadway for the demand-based pumps, pump station number forty-four rehabilitation. Amendment one adds two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety cents to the approved amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for a new task order total of four hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety cents. The previous task order is attached to your packets, and with that, it's the recommendation that we move forward with the approval of this budget resolution.
Motion on ten D?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion.
Quicker the better.
Get these done.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Brennicky?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has approved resolution twenty twenty-two oh five two four point four, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget to use the state revolving funds for area zero eleven improvements, or O eleven.
Okay, O eleven.
Thank you. Item ten E is the consideration of approval of change order number five for the Finn Stabilizer Dredge Project to Diamond Services Corporation in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. As background information, the city entered into a grant award agreement with Triumph Gulf Coast and the Eastern Shipbuilding Group on August first, twenty nineteen, and in accordance with the attached D R M P approval for this change order number five for Diamond Services Corporation to provide the additional unforeseen work for the dredge spoil ponds. This is fully reimbursable through Triumph, and as such, it's the recommendation we approve the change order to Diamond Services Corporation in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion on ten E?
Move approval.
Second the motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call roll.
Commissioner Raeder?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Brennicky?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Commission has approved resolution twenty twenty-two oh five two four point four, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget to use the state revolving funds for area O eleven improvements.
Item ten F is, was supplemented at the beginning of the meeting, which had a spreadsheet for the six engineering firms that I'm about to share with you. With that, the consideration, item ten F is the consideration of approval to enter into the contract negotiations for six selected engineering firms for phase one of the project restore for areas in Millville and area A two, which is in the Drummond Park area. As background information, the city advertised a request for qualification on April sixth, twenty twenty-two, and received six responses from qualified engineering firms on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. The project restore Millville and A two evaluation panel met on Friday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, to determine the best engineering firms for this project. The panel discussed each R F Q proposal, and after careful consideration, all the firms, of all the firms, the panel assigned each proposer with an area subsection, and it's delineated in the map that is attached to your packets. With that, it's the recommendation for us to not only enter into contract negotiations with all six engineering firms for the respective areas listed in the attached memo, but also to approve the contracts for them using the USDA design curve schedule.
That attachment that you have lists out the estimated construction cost. It has the USDA engineering fee curve. That does not include the subcontractors that they hired, geotech work, surveyors, et cetera. It's the same curve that's used with the S R F funding, the engineering contracts. It's the same curve that will be used later this meeting when it comes to the thirteen pump stations, and the contract itself will be identical, except for name, scope of work, and the amount, as the contracts that are here in this package for the thirteen lift station project. So the recommendation is to not only select them, but to go ahead and award the contract in light of three weeks before our next meeting, then they can, let me start work.
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor?
Your motion on ten F? Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, for the Drummond Park, the, the three firms that'll be assigned to the Drummond Park area are Cortemoler, B D I, and Panhandle Engineering. The three firms that'll be assigned to the Millville area will be Mott McDonald, Anchor C E I, and Barge.
So, famous question always is, like, what kind of timeframe? These are major infrastructure upgrades, like major, major in Millville and Drummond Park area, which also called St. Andrews. So, the, I think you said, hopefully, you know, the engineering won't take longer than four to six months, and we can get, and we can go out to bid, and then, of course, that's a couple months, and then this and that. But I just want, I mean, within, within, what, probably eight to ten months, we could start construction on these.
Yes, ma'am.
And so this three weeks, saving us three weeks till the next meeting, it sounds good to me.
It's important. That's right.
That means I'll move a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Can't be done sooner than.
Mark's still talking.
It just can't be done.
I just got excited.
Yes, he is excited. Just, just to remind the commissioners and the citizens that each of these projects are approximately, each, these subject areas are approximately twenty million dollar grant funded. This is C D B G D R funded projects. We're very grateful to Governor DeSantis and D E O. Director Eagle for their approvals of these funds, so that we can actually make a difference in these, each of these two communities.
I know. It's awesome.
Come on up.
Walter P. Henry, six fourteen Lake Avenue. I'm hoping that, this is concerning the repair replacements of the sewer line, water lines, in these areas, in lift station. I just want to know, I hope that it would not cause residents too much problem. I knew it need to be done. No problem with that. Need to be done. We need to, we need to be able to get in our, into our houses. Y'all, sometimes somebody had to put it somewhere where we gonna be able to park. We don't have to go miles to get to our house. I did this type of work, and I know it go, it go block streets, and folks not gonna be able to get, probably get in their residence. I know y'all was gonna say to the contractor, say that he can leave one section of the street open. That's impossible. I can see it done doing the water line, doing the sewer line. If the sewer's in the middle of the street, that whole street is gone. It's gone. You know, I just, you know, I don't want to be just like downtown that y'all was told, that y'all keep downtown open, they were one section. I can, you can look at it now, and you see that did not happen.
Yes, it did.
No, it's still, the section of the road is closed. When y'all started, from the, locked from this old city hall coming up, that whole section was shut down. You cannot drive through there. I'm saying driving through.
Yeah, there's no three tracks.
You cannot go through traffic.
You can still get to it and park to it. We did the best job that we can do.
I'm not saying you did, Mayor.
And I can promise you that all the engineers are here, and we will make it as user-friendly as possible to, for people to be able to get to their houses. But we do have to do the work.
Correct.
And I, and I appreciate you, you're, you're bringing that up.
I understand that. I understand what you're saying, but, but we have, we have the right, I meant to know, but these folks that had business in there, had to park for other places and walk in those streets. I'm just saying, don't say what you, that going to be done, and knowing that, I meant, they knew that when they did, when they offered the price, that they were not gonna be able to get, while they were traffic running down one side of the street. That's impossible. There's a problem with that. So I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, I, I know, sometimes we say things because we don't really, we don't really know. I done this.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
I've been in it. So.
I know. Thank you, sir.
I know Mr. Henry was not complaining about streetscapes, but I would like. I know Mr. Henry was not complaining about the street skates, but I would like people to know that obviously your intentions are block to block, but we had a really massive lead time on the lights and the trees and some of the other stuff. So instead of just sitting like, okay, well, we'll just wait till the trees come in, it's like, no, keep moving. So that was a, you know, executive decision to, and I think it was the right decision. It's a little bit of, little bit of pain, but, but we're getting there, so anyway.
Agree.
And those areas that, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, those areas that Mr. Henry has spoken of, they have very narrow right of ways because they're platted back in the day and it was a different consideration. It will be a difficult process with regard to construction, but I believe it'll be a short-term sacrifice for a long-term gain.
Okay, your motion?
We have a motion.
All right, call the roll.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brennicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten G is consideration of approval of Panhandle Engineering for the Part Two Architectural and Engineering Services in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars for the Hints Park FEMA project number eight-two-three-eight-five. As background information, the city has advertised for a request for qualifications July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, received three responsive bidders from qualified architectural firms on August ninth, twenty twenty-one. After careful consideration of the qualifications, Panhandle Engineering Incorporated was recommended as best qualified consultant and I, as your city manager, successfully negotiated an acceptable fee for their services for part one master planning. The fee was approved by the city commission and the master plans were developed and approved by the city. The Panhandle Engineering is now proposing the Part Two fee for the basic and supplemental services to design the approved master plan. The services will include the development documents at sixty percent, construction documents at ninety, and bid documents at one hundred percent, permitting, bid support, construction administration, and cost estimating services to the city of Panama City for the design of the Hints Park project. The scope and fees herein are based on design of the concept master plans as developed by Panhandle Engineering and submitted and approved by the city commission on January twentieth, twenty twenty-two. With that, it's a recommendation that we approve this contract with Panhandle Engineering for Part Two Architectural and Engineering Services for Hints Park in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars.
Motion on ten G.
I'll make the motion. Second to motion, mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brennicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
And could I ask one question, Mark? Does this include the stormwater pond design as well?
It will be baked into that and then we'll be looking for grant funding separately to support the construction of the stormwater parts separate from the funding that we're gonna get from the state concerning the park itself. Okay, item ten H is a consideration to approve the expenditure of budget funds to expand the police department's vehicle fleet for eight new vehicles in the amount of ninety-three thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-six cents for the current year and for the total amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty cents over the five-year period. The Panama City Police Department is, has a continuing need to maintain an operational fleet of emergency response vehicles that aid in the timely and service and protection of the citizens of the city of Panama City. As performance of these vehicles can exact a heavy toll on the vehicle's use, the maintenance and repair of those vehicles becomes cost prohibitive to ensure the police department can continue to provide the same standard of care for the citizens it serves. The purchase of new vehicles on a rotating basis has become a necessity. It's part of our lifecycle replacement strategy for these vehicles. With that, these vehicles are purchased with necessary equipment and lights by piggybacking off of the Charlotte County, Florida Purchasing Department's contract through five-year leases with a one-dollar buyout provided by Bancorp. This allows the department to appropriate budgets over the funds for each of the successive years and with that, it's the recommendation that we enter into this expenditure for the eight new vehicles for the Panama City Police Department.
Motion on ten H.
Yes, sir. Move staff recommendation on this.
Second to motion, mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brennicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten I is a consideration of approval for the Oakland Cemetery National Historic Preservation Application. As background information, this is the preliminary application of Florida Department of State, Bureau of Historic Preservation to list the cemetery on the National Register of Historic Places. The site has been used as a cemetery for a hundred and twenty-seven years and several significant local people were buried, have been buried there to include Mr. George West Bell Booth McKenzie and these two were connected with the McKenzie House and the Panama City Publishing Company, which are also on the National Register. Adding the cemetery can generate community interest in important sites and give credibility to the local efforts to preserve historic resources. With that, it's the recommendation that we approve the Oakland Cemetery National Historic Preservation Application that's before you.
Your motion?
I'll move a motion to accept.
Second to motion, mayor.
Hundred and twenty-seven years old?
I knew that West was buried there. I did not realize that Bell Booth McKenzie was buried there as well. I mean, what a cool idea. Nancy, thank you. Okay.
The, now I won't have to explain the origin of the Bell Booth Blonde at the history class. That was R.L. McKenzie's first wife who died before she had children.
Really? Okay. Didn't know that. Do we have, do you say we have a motion?
Yeah, we're all due.
In a second.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brennicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
I have a question. Is there an accurate plat on, on everything over there, you think? I wouldn't know, but I mean, you would know.
I'm not a hundred and twenty-seven.
No, no, no. It's pretty old.
Okay, item ten J is a consideration to award contract to Diamond Landscape Management LLC for the delivery and installation of Tif Tuff Bermuda sod to the Woodsfield in the amount of forty-six thousand six hundred dollars. As background information, a request for proposals was advertised to the city, by the city on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two for the delivery and installation of sixty-five thousand square feet of Tif Tuff Bermuda sod at Woodsfield. City received one proposal, which was evaluated by the city staff selection committee. The contract would be for a one-year in length with four twelve-month optional renewals and for maintenance. With that in mind, it's the recommendation that we move forward with the award of the contract to Diamond Landscape Management LLC for the sod at Woodsfield.
Do they have a sprinkler system over there?
This is a key project. It is being installed as well.
All right. Makes me feel better. Your motion?
They do have sprinkler system. Motion to approve, mayor.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
That's good grass.
Yeah, if you water it.
I would like to say poor Sean has been at this trying to get sod for a long time. So thank you. And he knows every, all these projects he's doing, he's putting irrigation in. There's not gonna be a single blade of grass that's not gonna have irrigation. Yes.
Got to have.
Sweet.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brennicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten K is a consideration of purchasing a twenty-twenty-three international three-point-five-yard concrete truck for the amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand ninety-eight cents from Rush Truck Center through Sourcewell Contract Number zero-six-zero-nine-two-nine-dash-NVS. As background information, we have many concrete repairs needed throughout the city. Our concrete truck is over fifteen years old and requires frequent repairs. Without a dependable truck, we must rely on deliveries from supplier trucks that can take several weeks to schedule. In addition, there are fees for multiple stops that are frequently needed to have for smaller repairs. The street maintenance crews need a reliable concrete truck to pour multiple jobs and continue to save on concrete delivery fees by maintaining the ability to pick up concrete from local suppliers and deliver it to multiple sites around the city. The existing concrete truck will be sold as surplus. The, as recommendation, is the approval for the purchase of model two-zero-two-three MV-six-zero-seven SBA International three-point-five-yard diesel concrete truck from Rush Truck Center based on the statewide Sourcewell Contract zero-six-zero-nine-two-nine-dash-NVS for the amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand ninety-eight cents.
Motion on ten K.
Yeah, this is important. I, it's very important. Move approval of it, can't get here fast enough again.
I'll second the motion, mayor.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm just kinda curious, like, I mean, we all, I mean, we all, I mean, the sidewalks everywhere.
Oh, God, yes.
It's just, yeah, I mean, the entire city. So how does this, like, what's realistic here? Okay, first of all, we gotta hire people to, to be able to operate.
Get the equipment, gotta hire, train.
I mean, it's gonna be a full-time job every day.
We don't need engineers to do sidewalks, do we? Surely.
I'm sorry.
We don't need engineers to do sidewalks.
No, no, no.
Go. Well, yeah, I know that, but the repairs, get out there and get them done.
So, so once we get the truck, then we'll have to hire, you know, people and that'll be a full-time job. Like those people you hire is full-time, they'll be doing, fixing pieces of sidewalks and all of that, okay?
Thank you, Lord.
Getting closer.
Yes, that's awesome.
Pushing, pushing hard, General.
We've got great teammates and I appreciate Clint, he was in the room earlier, and Jonathan and his team.
Call the roll.
I made the motion.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brennicki.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten L is a consideration of approval of Anchor CEI, Gorder Muller Engineering Incorporated, Black and Veetac Corporation for a continuing professional services contract for city projects which are funded by the state revolving funds, which is under the Panama City twenty-two dash zero-two-one. As background information, the city, Panama City, through the city's purchasing division solicited qualifications from experienced and qualified architects and engineers to provide continuing professional services for the city of Panama City for various state revolving fund projects. This was through solicitation PC twenty-two dash zero-two-one. The scope was to seek professional services for continuing contracts, which includes providing the city with the ability to solicit qualifications for future state revolving fund projects directly from the approved consultants list. The RFQ was issued pursuant to section two-eight-seven point zero-five-five of the Florida statutes, which is the Consultants Competitive Negotiation Act, the CCNA, for continuing contracts. The department recommendation is after four-person selection panel from the Department of Public Works review the qualifications of each of the firms and the staff recommends the approval for each of these engineering firms for the continuing professional service, services contract in support of the state revolving fund.
Motion.
Let's go, I'll move the motion.
Ten L.
Second to motion, mayor.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brennicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Oh, city manager, just, I just wanted to make a distinction. These contracts are not continuing in the sense that they're under that statute that you're limited to a four million dollar criteria. These are selected for a particular project, which is the entire SRF project, which is divided up into multiple engineering contracts and there'll be multiple construction contracts. But the project itself, all of the SRF work is what was advertised and what these engineers have been selected for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. And so by contrast, we have the projects that are not supported by state revolving fund, which is what item ten M is all about. So the consideration to approve, approval of STV Incorporated and Black Veetac Corporation for a continuing professional services contract for city projects not funded by the state revolving funds. As background information, the city, through its purchasing department, solicited additional engineering firms through solicitation PC twenty-two dash zero-two-zero. The scope was to seek professional services for continuing contracts, which includes providing the city with the ability to solicit qualifications for future projects directly from approved consultants. The RFQ was issued pursuant to the section twenty-two-eight-seven point zero-five-five for the Florida statutes Consultants Competitive Negotiation Act for continuing contracts. Each of these were evaluated and recommended by the Public Works Department for approval and as part of the list of certified and qualified professional engineers to support the continuing professional services contract. With that, it's a recommendation, recommendation we accept both of these firms.
Motion on ten M.
Motion to approve, mayor.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Brennicki.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten N is the consideration of the approval of the CCTV inspection and utility rehabilitation services contract with the following firms, forms, excuse me, the following firms. Advanced Pace Technologies, Bearing Point Construction, Gulf Coast Underground, and Vortex Services. A request for proposal was advertised by the city to review competitive bids for the city sewer and storm CCTV inspection and rehabilitation services.